Good evening, everyone. I'll call this committee or this meeting to order here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. We do not have remote electronic attendance today, so we'll start with a roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro. Schmidt.
Present.
All right, thank you very much. Next item of business is our board appointments. Mayor's reappointment of John Knott to the Moline Park and Recreation Board for a full five-year term to expire May 31st, 2029. Mayor's reappointment of Bill Abel to the Moline Park and Recreation Board for a full five-year term to expire May 31st, 2029. The mayor's appointment of Rochelle Carlin Kruger to the Rock Island County Metropolitan Mass Transit District, MetroLink Board of Trustees, to fill the unexpired term of Sam McCollum to expire November 30th, 2027. And she's right back there. You've probably met before, ahead of MCDC, so... Any questions on those appointments? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to our proclamation to declare June 19th, 2024 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Proclamation reads... There is no one here to speak, please correct. Proclamation reads, "Whereas approximately eleven and one-half million African-Americans survived the voyage to the New World and were forced to submit to slavery for more than 240 years after arrival in the United States, and whereas Juneteenth commemorates the day freedom was proclaimed to all enslaved people in Texas by Union Major General Gordon Granger on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, more than two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln, and whereas today Juneteenth celebrates African-American freedom and achievement while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures and is a recognition of the many contributions that African-Americans have made throughout America's history and presently, both well enslaved and liberated, and whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, genders, religions, orientations, abilities, and countries of origin share in common love of and respect for freedom, as well as a determination to protect their right to freedom. Now therefore, I Sangitha Raiapetti, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim this 19th day of June, 2024, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day." So, thank you for your time and attention to that proclamation. That is tomorrow. And while it's not a holiday here at the city, we hope you're able to commemorate the day in some meaningful way. Thank you. Is there public comment this evening, Chief? Any one in the audience? Okay, hearing none. Questions on the agenda? I had given you a heads up last week about this Scrivener error, but I'll remind you that items 15.1 through 15.5 appeared on the June 11th agenda as... I think he meant June 4th, yes. June 4th agenda as Consent Agenda Second Reading Ordinances. There was a Scrivener's error, and this should have been Consent Agenda First Reading Ordinances. These will be approved tonight as the second reading. Okay? Any other questions? Hearing none, we move to our Committee of the Whole Agenda Items. 8.1, A Resolution Approving the Renaming of East End Park to O'Brien Park in Memory of Pat and Cecilia O'Brien. Mr. Vitas?
Well, it gives me great pleasure and it's an honor to recognize both Pat for his service to the city and to the state, to the county, and Cecilia as well for her service to the county and to the school board. Two dedicated public servants who spent a lifetime dedicating and volunteering their time and their energy to better this community and the Quad Cities. And I think it's a great honor to bestow on their family in their memory and in recognition, and we're hoping by the end of August to have the sign completed, and then hopefully in September to be able to unveil the sign with their family present. Recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Alderperson Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.2, A Resolution Authorizing Creation of the Position of Facilities Manager Together With Any Required Adjustments to the Compensation and Classification Plan. Mr. Vitas?
Madam Mayor, members of council, before you tonight is the newly created position of Facilities Manager, which was a part of the Fleet and Facilities Manager position held by Sarah Mark. As you recall, several... Well, last year, we retained the services of Strategic Government Resources to do an evaluation and an assessment of the Public Works operations in total. And one of the recommendations that came out of that was to split the responsibilities between those two positions. So, when we adopted the budget last year for this current fiscal year, these two positions actually were separated out, and we're recommending approval of the Facilities Manager position and recruitment of that individual.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3, A Resolution Endorsing the Nomination of the Skelly Service Station Located at 825th Avenue, Moline, Illinois for Inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places.
Once again, thank you for the opportunity to present this to the council for a resolution which would endorse the longstanding efforts of a local resident, lifetime resident of Moline from the Florciante neighborhood, Felix Vallejo.
Vallejo.
Vallejo. Vallejo. But to recognize his efforts to restore the Skelly Service Station and have it placed for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places. It's already locally recognized here by the city and was, I believe, a year ago. So, this is the final step in a long process to recognize his efforts there. Recommending approval.
Yeah, I heard it from you.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderperson Macias, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Right here. I'll just encourage you to go inside at some time when Felix offers that. He's really done a nice job.
What's interesting is looking back in history, as far as I can, there were stations like that that existed and were operational back in the day that I remember. So, it's really kind of incredible to see that building brought back to life.
All right. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.4, A Resolution Authorizing the Chief of Police on behalf of the City of Moline to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Quad City Metropolitan Enforcement Group and the Moline Police Department setting forth the terms and conditions for agency participation, thereby enabling the Moline Police Department to engage in a cooperative effort in criminal investigations, particularly involving multi-jurisdictional illegal drug trafficking, gun trafficking, human trafficking, violent crimes, and the use and distribution of controlled substances. Chief?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Quad City Metropolitan Enforcement Group has been in existence in the Quad Cities since 1973. We have participated in this since the inception. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to staff this for the last few years. I'm hopeful that as our staffing rebounds, I can get someone there. But this is an annual requirement by the state, by the Intergovernmental Cooperation Group. It lays forward the board, which I sit on, the policy board, as well as the responsibilities of the agencies. So, I just ask for approval.
Motion to approve. Motion by Finch.
Second.
Seconded by Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.5, A Resolution Authorizing the Chief of Police on behalf of the City of Moline to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Rock Island County Drug Court and the Moline Police Department setting forth the rules and expectations for agency participation.
Well, Your Honor, this is a project that came out of our podcast series. Not... It has not debuted yet, but we had the Drug Court staff on the podcast, which will be released in a few weeks. Out of that, we learned about the Drug Court Board, and they invited a staff member of Moline to join. The Rock Island County Drug Court actually was formed in 2000. It's been a staple of our community. It became a certified problem-solving court by the Illinois Supreme Court in July of 2017. They've screened over three, almost 3,000 candidates since its inception. You have to be a Rock Island County resident willing participation. A willing participant scored high needs and high risk, have a diagnosis of drug and alcohol disorder. Basically, the staff, the people that sit on this board assist the decision-makers and then follow the candidate through an 18-month program to graduation after they completed five phases of graduation, including one year of continuous sobriety. So, this has no real fiscal impact, other than time of a staff member to attend the meetings. So, I think it's an interesting thing. I'm actually surprised that we hadn't been involved in this prior, but I'm excited to have Moline be engaged in this program, which has proven to be a very successful part of our criminal justice system. So, I'd ask for approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Razak. Discussion. The reason he was smirking is because I asked him if this was a good use of our officer time to create a podcast, asked him to prove it to me, and he continues to do so. Mr. Timian?
I... It's a good use of time for my bike rides. It's been great. But I'm always happy when there are compassionate responses to people suffering from addiction. And I'm really glad that we're participating. This is a very humane way of giving people a second chance without a permanent black mark.
Thank you. Was there a hand over here? Okay, thank you very much. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. 8.6, A Resolution Approving the Amended 2024 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2025 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan as presented during the roundtable discussion at the City Council meeting held on June 11th, 2024. Mr. Vitas?
Mayor and council, we are recommending approval of the amendments to the 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as well as the projected 2025 through 2027 CIP, which you will see again in the fall as a part of our deliberations on the budget.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Was Razak followed by Finch? Discussion from the council. Yes, Mr. Macias?
Thank you. The second ward used to be... Used to have the Wildwood area, and that fence is... It's basically budgeted to be engineered and taken care of again. My comment is just to basically look at how much... We fixed it three times before in the past. While it looked nice, it's plastic and it just keeps on breaking. But if we can, you know, strike a balance of something that's going to last for a long time and still look decent, I would just recommend, because I'd hate for us to be back, you know, three years later and try and fix this fence again. So, that's just my only comment on one of the items here.
You don't want to throw good money after bad, so to speak.
Correct. It's been... It's happened before, and it's always a nicer every time it happens as well. So, you get frustration from people wanting to get it done right away, but it is a very unique spot that that fence is at, so...
Okay, thank you.
My only comment.
So noted, and we are looking at permanent solutions.
Thank you.
No plastic fence, we'll go back up.
All right, anything further from the council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.7, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Attest to Acceptance of a Traffic Signal Easement Related to Project 1468, John Deere Seating Pedestrian Crossing Traffic Signal Installation, 416 and 501 River Drive.
Yes, Your Honor, the John Deere Company has requested and is funding the cost for the installation of pedestrian crossing traffic signals at the two locations identified here on River Drive to basically provide their employees with safe crossing at that, on that busy road. Because as you know, it's about a 66-foot wide, you know, curb-to-curb distance, which is pretty significant. So, they've requested it, they're funding it, and we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.8, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Attest to a Licensing Agreement with Finney's of Moline LLC DBA River House Bar and Grill for use of public right-of-way for use of the historic block courtyard for the outdoor service of alcoholic liquor and food in conjunction with chilling in the courtyard on Saturday, August 10th, 2024, and Saturday, September 14th, 2024.
Your Honor, members of council, we're recommending approval of the resolution and the request from Finney's of Moline LLC to reactivate this space. It's been several years since it's actually been active. It's been used very rarely. I can recall maybe once or twice in the last three years. And Kirk Marsky, who manages the Moline Center, has worked out the details on this, and we'd like to see that space reactivated this fall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch. Was that...
Me.
Was the second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. We move to our informational. Mr. Schmidt, Sidewalks Snow Removal Program.
I got scared I missed a presentation. Good evening. So, tonight I did want to bring a presentation for a possible sidewalk removal program. I do realize the irony of it's June, talking about snow. However, you know, during the off-season, the snow really gives us a chance to evaluate our programs, possible ideas that we might come up with. So, the last several months, my administrative team, we've been thinking about different ideas to really how to respond to snow and really to provide better service for the city. So, this, again, it came about back in January. We obviously received a large amount of snow. It highlights positive things that we're doing and also maybe a gap or two that we solve. And one of those would be removing snow from the sidewalks. City Code does require that residents are responsible for removing snow after 12 hours once the snow ends from their sidewalks. But as we all know, sometimes for a variety of reasons, that does not occur. So, how do we kind of go about that? There are many different ways to problem-solve this issue. One of them being status quo, we can kind of just go forward with what we're currently doing. We're trying to get more education, social media attention out to, you know, city code requirements for residents to actually clear the snow. I don't think this is probably the best option. I don't like status quo. I like to kind of push forward and kind of maybe think about different ideas and look at different things. Another option would be the residents actually clearing the snow from the sidewalk. I think, you know, at least in my experience, for I've seen, that's probably not realistic. You know, there is different reasons why residents aren't maybe able to clear snow. And then a third would be nuisance abatement. We kind of looked in this heat of the moment for looking at contracting out sidewalks, no removal. I think to me, that was a higher cost for the city to look at, to implement. And then we'd have to come up with a way to maybe chart back to the residents. Again, I don't think that's maybe appropriate or the fairest way to go about. Which kind of leads us to the fourth option would be kind of a aggressive route out for a community volunteer approach. So, what that program would look like, it would be a pilot program. We would look at working with the community at large to kind of come together, help those in need to figure out a way to clear those sidewalks. Public Works Department would coordinate that effort. I have confidence in my administrative team that we could handle that. We would be, again, social media presence. We would get waivers. We would get all the agreements with residents. And then also a few other things. Participants. So, again, my recommendation would be due to age. Some people are not able to do sidewalk clearing because of their age. Other communities that we evaluated ranged between 60 to 65. I thought maybe 62 seemed like a reasonable age for those in need. Medical condition. Obviously, if you're now of a certain age, you can still have a medical condition that prevent you from possibly, you know, clearing sidewalk. And then low income as well. Some residents might want to hire somebody to clear the walk, but just not financially able to do that. So, those are really the three areas that we considered to have participates kind of fall into. Participants would not be part of like an apartment complex or HOA who's already paying for contracted services for snow removal. We're not looking to supply that service. Really, it's really supposed to be a voluntary effort. So, volunteer pool. We have had discussions with some community organizations already. They have interest in doing that. Students at the high school, it's a possibility as well. Neighborhood organizations, obviously, you know, city elected officials. You all have connections with the community, obviously. So, we would rely on you to kind of get the word out, let us know who might be a good participant or a good volunteer for this program. Again, liability and waivers. We want it to be a basically minimal cost for the city. So, we'd want to reduce liability on the... Off the city and have waivers signed by participants and volunteers. Basically, holding the city harmless from any type of action from the property. Last slide here. Basically, some other considerations. No guarantee of assistance. If the number of participants outweigh the volunteers, it is a voluntary program. So, there might be on occasion where a volunteer are not able to respond in time. So, they just would not have their sidewalk cleared at that point. I'd prefer that the volunteer commits for the full season, and we'd probably assign them to one to five houses, depending on how many they would prefer. The snow event would most likely be two inches or more. That way, we're not just going out and activating the volunteers just like on a dusting. So, 24, 48 hours to complete the removal. We have the city requirement of 12 hours. That's for your own property. I feel like this program, you know, it's... Since it's voluntary, it helps... Would help get those volunteers out to those residences and give them one to two days to clear the residence. And also, there'd be no required interaction between the volunteer and the homeowner as well. So, program success, in my opinion, even if we're helping five to 10 people, that's actually making a positive difference. I think, you know, that's why we're all kind of in public service, is to make that difference. So, even if it starts out slow and we're able to make some small difference, you know, I'm willing to say that that's a successful program. Another option we're looking, considering, we have some kind of reward system program for volunteers to actually fulfill the whole year. What that would be is nothing too high to have people who don't necessarily want to do the program. They just want the reward. We don't really want that type of volunteer. But really, just to kind of show appreciation for any type of volunteer that would be part of that program. So, tonight, really, I'm just... We're ready to kind of go, but I just want to get council's feedback before we actually start, you know, moving in that direction. Obviously, any comments or concerns, you know, this is just kind of the starting point. We're obviously going to talk about it throughout the year, but this is something we're looking forward to implementing and moving forward with.
Counsel. Mr. Timian?
I have a couple of questions. First is, this doesn't cover my neighbor who has money, is capable physically, and just doesn't ever shovel their sites.
Correct.
And lives by a school. And so, in that case, do we go towards abatement or zoning enforcement?
I think that would be a discussion probably, discussion internally with city administrator on that end. We haven't gone that route in the past, so I think, you know, that would be a broader discussion.
Yeah, I don't want to send Brad all over in the next storm.
Exactly.
But there are situations where I think it warrants some attention.
You said you had a couple of questions.
And the other one is, I don't know... I understand the desire for the low-income qualifier. I feel like we should be focusing more on physical ability. Personally, there are plenty of low-income people that can pick up a shovel.
Sure.
Definitely the elderly or those who are just not physically capable. I don't... That's just me. Everyone else might disagree.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes, I'm excited about this because last year I saw children walking in the street to Hamilton, and I was very concerned. And so, I would like to see that where the schools are, is the first priority to find out whether the neighbors have an issue, you know, whether they're physically unable or what to shovel the snow, but I think it's a move in the right direction.
Yeah, I think we would definitely want to deploy the volunteers in the schools first.
Yes.
The closer the better for the volunteers.
Mr. Schmidt?
I think that this must be in part a path on moving toward greater abatement. Because I think we... One of the reasons we have always hesitated to move forward with a strong abatement program is because we are going to capture a lot of these people who are, for whatever reason, unable to get their sidewalks done. And I think... So, I think, like, that's what Alderperson Timian pointed out and Alderperson Murphy pointed out too, there's a lot of situations in places you see where it's like that's being done by businesses, by residents, and they're causing problems, especially by schools, which are, you know, and... But even any of our sidewalks are just being used. And I think... So, I think offering this helps us get to a place where abatement becomes a more possible, more feasible, though obviously it has to be part of that long-term process, how we pull it out. I understand those challenges. As I think about the qualifications, also reacting to Alderperson Timian, I think that low income belongs there as a consideration, as well as vicinity to school, but not necessarily requirements. I think you're right in that requirement should be based on that physical capability and age. But considerations and our focus around schools and also in areas where people have a low income, that relates... Because if you have to pick between two people, right, we have one more, and one person could afford it and one person can't, I think that's a fair way to draw that line. And the last sort of piece that I had sticking in my head as looking at this was when we're thinking about the, I guess, the program success and how we're going to roll people through or keep them active. I think that's going to be key as far as setting up those partnerships. And I lost my thought. I'm sorry.
I'll pick up where he's left off. I think that I love the idea of potential, like, radiuses or radii around schools as a delineating, like, this is where we're targeting, especially in a pilot year. But also, you know, I would echo the comments about medical conditions or reasons why they can't get it done as rising to the top. I would say that probably legal counsel has to give guidance on how we prove that and don't, you know, disrupt people's rights about disclosure. Perhaps there's a certain level of trust there, but it's something to be aware of with legal counsel. The other thing is recruitment to participate and to volunteer is absolutely... That's where the payoff will happen, in my opinion, based on having done a little of this volunteer shoveling at certain times over the past few years. But also, connecting with organizations that you've mentioned, like the volunteer groups and things. Like, so Rotary just talked about how they... They're sponsoring a house through Humility Homes, and they're doing the lawn care and stuff like that. It's just one location in Moline. I mean, that could be the same house that they done, you know, are part of the snow shoveling program too. But that's also something to be aware of, right, that some of these organizations are already booked with with volunteering in some of these ways. But I think it takes a real concerted effort to drill all the way down to like, oh, there's this Boy Scout troop, and there's this other volunteer group, and there's this company that this is going to be there volunteering through the winter. You know, there's so many of those. So, I think that's key. There was one other point with... Oh, when it comes to the volunteers, you know, who's paying for gas and their snow blowers to do it? Is that coming out of their pockets, or is that a gift card that can happen and some sort of incentive? You see what I mean? You participate for the whole time, and who's checking the work? Is that our staff that's going back to make sure the volunteers actually did the places that they were assigned to? You see what I'm saying? But I do think there's some... There could be something very small like that that acknowledges there's wear and tear on your body or your machine, you know, and that kind of thing. Did you have another point? I thought I saw your hand, Ray. Mr. Macias?
Thank you. I would say with the recruitment efforts, also targeting like high school sports teams, this is a great thing that they could do together as team-building. And also students, it's a... If there's a name for it, say the Moline Volunteers, whatever it's called.
Still men.
There you go. They could put a...
That's not gender.
It's snow people.
I'm just kidding.
So, they could put it on their resumes when they're applying for scholarships. So, just putting those things out there, there might be kids that are not going to connect the dots. But if we mention those things, they might say, hey, they might do it for the reward. So, I wouldn't, you know, shy away from that either. So, just some thoughts.
Anything further from the council? Yes, Mr. Timian?
Snow angels.
Oh, there you go. Love it.
It's probably patented already, but that is kind of cute. It's probably patented already, but that is kind of cute.
Moline.
Mr. Schmidt?
Um, one other consideration of, of a, a group I want to make sure is excluded is rental property. When you talk, you touched on commercial property, thinking of it in that larger scale, apartment buildings, but, um, when it comes to someone who, you know, we have landlords who are, are ignoring dozens of properties and that sort of thing. And now their tenants will come and say, well, I need this done. My landlord doesn't do it. But if that's a landlord responsibility in particular, um, and I don't know what the rules are on, on when that responsibility is on the, the resident versus the landlord, or if that's just determined by lease or how that goes, because I'm open to some flexibility there, but, um, at the same time, I'm not really interested in subsidizing shoveling for landlord companies in particular.
Mr. Masias?
Thank you. Just a, a thought, oh, and this is my marketing hat. So, uh, as a reward, uh, I'm thinking, uh, just hats with a logo. They're all the same color. You see a bunch of kids out in the neighborhood cleaning, you know, it's just the Snow Angels or whatever we decide to call them. But it's a nice incentive, and it's practical because they can actually use it while they're doing this too.
Mr. Timian?
We, we're talking about school routes. This comes up in, in my ward and, uh, in Mr. McNeil's ward too, on Twelfth Avenue. The, we already have an issue where the snowplows push snow onto the sidewalks, and there's the school routes, and they're completely unusable for about three months a year. Last year it wasn't so bad, except for like two weeks. But, um, I, I, I believe we're going to have a hard time expecting residents to shovel their own snow if we are, if we have a program that removes snow and we're the ones putting snow on their sidewalks. So I think that, I, I could see some real frustration there. So we probably need to consider some remedy for that.
Okay.
Whether it is certain routes like this, that there is no, all the sidewalks are back a curb, they always get pushed out. We come back with a scraper or something and just clear them off. I, I don't know what it is, but, uh, I think that could be a middle ground. But, I mean, I, I don't think we have many roads like that, like.
Correct. It's, it doesn't end, end up necessarily being an equity issue because those are really unique streets and really unique needs given the, the students walking to school. Don't forget about Black Hawk College students, uh, Stana of Western, people, groups that?
Definitely.
Need volunteer hours. All, and I just want to point out, I think forty-eight hours after a storm ends is way too long for somebody to wait.
Too long.
Twenty-four to thirty-six seems like, even if you're dealing with your own.
Yeah.
And you have a volunteer spot.
Make it thirty-six.
What?
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
Anything further from the council?
All right. Thank you for doing all that work.
Yeah, thank you.
Much appreciated. So we'll call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and justiciable.
Ms. Castro is not here. For an invocation, roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Masias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
McNeil?
Present.
Castro, Schmidt?
Present.
Your honor, I request the approval of committee of the whole council and executive session meeting minutes of June four, twenty twenty-four, and appointments made during committee of the whole on June eighteen, twenty twenty-four, and consent agenda items fifteen point one through fifteen point six and sixteen point one through sixteen point five inclusively.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please. Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Masias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. None consent agenda resolutions. Item number eighteen point one, a resolution endorsing the nomination of the Skelly Service Station located at eight two zero Fifth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Masias. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? I mean, excuse me. Roll call, please. Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Masias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number eighteen point two, a resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Quad City Metropolitan Enforcement Group and the Moline Police Department, setting forth the terms and conditions for agency participation, thereby enabling the Moline Police Department to engage in a cooperative effort in criminal investigations, particularly involving multi-jurisdictional illegal drug trafficking, gun trafficking, human trafficking, violent crimes, and the use and distribution of controlled substances.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Masias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number eighteen point three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with General Con- Constr- I knew I was going to mess that word up.
Constructors.
Constructors, Inc. of the Quad Cities for project number fourteen thirty-six Seventy Street and John Deere Parkway retaining wall for the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, was that seconded by Razak?
Razak.
Thank you. Um, discussion. Roll call, please. Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Masias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. That motion carries, and that is all I have this evening, your honor. Okay. Miss ladies business. Um, tomorrow I will head out for the ninety-second annual U, US Conference of Mayors. I've always brought things back to y'all, mostly to staff.
Hopefully.
Programs to pass, et cetera. Um, uh, that will be in Kansas City. Um, my out-of-office reply on email is set to, if you need something immediately, write to Alderperson at large, Mr. Schmidt, or Mayor Pro Tem for this month is Mr. McNeil. So, if there were anything that needed to be signed, I don't think you're quite as familiar with Mayor Pro Tem, but they would be in touch. Okay?
Okay.
Um, I also wanted to just give a shout out to Eric Griffith and all of the team, the chief, et cetera, for managing surprises with our new pool opening. There continue to be things to navigate. Um, and so we appreciate all of that. I've just gotten one or two calls on a couple of things I need to share, but thank you for all of that. Ms. Murphy?
Nothing, your honor.
Masias?
Nothing, your honor.
Razak?
Your honor, I have a ward meeting tomorrow. Please wish me success.
Yep. Third ward meeting is tomorrow, and then that concludes, because you did one in November, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that concludes.
I'll have another one coming up there pretty soon.
Oh, good. Let, let, um, Macy McManus know so she can pump it all out.
Okay.
For your constituents on socials, et cetera. Mr. Timian?
Uh, your honor, thank you. I walked in the Pride Five K last week. I just want to express appreciation that our community is welcoming and inclusive to all types and that it is a safe place to do such an event, and that is all.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil?
Um, I just want to thank, uh, Denver, Barry, Bob, the mayor, for attending, uh, sixth ward meeting. Um, a good and passionate group. Um, and, uh, I think we, we rival Debbie's attendance. We're very, very close and, um, and so, uh, good meeting and thank you all. Yeah.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, your honor.
Staff?
Yes, just, uh, very quickly, a reminder to the council as well as the mayor that the hundred and eleventh Illinois Municipal League Conference, which is kind of the, it's the, uh, it's the premier education and training and networking opportunity for local government officials across the state, is coming up again this year in Chicago on September nineteenth to the twenty-first. I would encourage you to attend if you've never been before, or if you've been before and enjoyed it, to attend again. Uh, you always walk away with greater knowledge and, and contacts in the, in the industry, which you can always call on. Uh, I believe it's going to be held at the Hyatt Regency Chicago this year as opposed to where it was last year. The, it was a Congress Hotel, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and an opportunity to attend the ILC MA conference, uh, a week ago, I believe it was. Now, it seems longer. Uh, and some of the takeaways from there were really great. And the opportunity to talk to a company that specializes in assisting and establishing and tracking down and forming business licensing programs. I know one of the things we talked about is, we don't know who's doing business in the city because we don't issue licenses across the city. So I'm going to have a meeting scheduled. I already have a meeting scheduled with the folks I met with, and they're going to kind of provide a demonstration here in terms of how that works. I, um, I also talked to a company that does the same thing related to rental housing, and another company that's planning on start is in the process of establishing that. That way we can track down landlords, whether they're local or regional or out-of-state landlords, to ensure that we bring people into compliance with our ordinance related to rental housing. Speaking of rental housing, um, we have over fifteen hundred registered, uh, landlords, volun- who have voluntarily identified. We have a number, of course, who I have requested exemptions, which we'll be following up on all exemption requests to, to validate those. Um, we also sent a letter out, I believe it was yesterday, which was the final notice, the final reminder, um, under Margaret's signature, so they know we're not messing around, that we're serious. Um, and there was one thousand four hundred and forty-three letters that went out with the application as well as the waiver form. So, we expect that by July one, if we don't hear from them, they can expect that they will be going to the municipal court to munisance, and we will pursue fines and penalties. So.
Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, when you said the exemptions or exceptions, that's just people who are saying they're not actually landlords? Or are there other things that they're asking?
They are landlords, but the house that they're renting is occupied by one of the exclusion categories, which are immediate family members.
Gotcha.
So we will be validating immediate family members. There's a system for that, and we will do that. So, just so you know, we're, we're working on all of that, and it is moving forward. That's all I have to make.
Thank you. Any other staff? All right. Hearing none. Is there any further public comment this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Murphy?
Your honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees five ILCS one twenty slash two C one and collective negotiating matters dash five ILS one twenty slash two C two, property acquisitions dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C five, pending probable or imminent litigation dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven.
Second.
All right. Motion by Murphy, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please. Alderperson Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Masias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
McNeil?
Aye.